Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, October 26, 2020, meeting of the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council. This meeting is taking place via Zoom US teleconference. In order to give public comment or listen to the meeting, you can call 1-301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 889-930-73176, and the password is 911321. You will not be able to enter the meeting until 15 minutes prior, which has already started. And once you enter, you will be placed on mute. So I believe to answer, we'll get to that. So all right, first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. So we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then moment of silence. Okay. All righty, so for public comments, they are limited to three minutes per person. Please alert staff that you would like to make a public comment by pressing star nine, and that will raise your hand, and you can be recognized. Keep in mind, if it's an item that's not on the agenda, we will listen to the comment, but we may not be able to discuss it this evening, since it wasn't on our agenda. So our first item this evening, are there any, first of all, is there any public comments?
There's no public on the call, so.
All right, all right, so minutes from our consent agenda is our first item, and it is minutes from September 28, 2020, and the Halloween trick or treat hours, setting the hours for trick or treat from six to eight. Does anybody have any questions about that? And then we did have Halloween safety tips, and I think we're recommending following the CDC guidelines as far as social distancing, possibly using, you know, bags for the candy, which is a good idea, maybe put the candy in bags and have it so the kids can grab it without having to get too close, or having a cool delivery system where everybody can stay far apart might not be a bad idea as well. So.
So catapult as an option.
Yeah, that was interesting. That would be cool, too. Whatever unique idea you can find, but so does anybody have any problem with the items on the consent agenda, or want to take anything off? Or?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you, Carrie, for getting those tips out and the graphic for that.
Of course, and then if we could just say real quick, if you don't want to participate, or if you want to start trick or treating later than others, just turn your your front door light on. If you want to participate, leave it off if you don't.
Yep, thank you for that. Yeah, that's important. So we know it's a difficult time, and we know not everybody's going to be into it this year. So I think people will be understanding. So thank you, Carrie. All right, so next item is our unfinished business, and this is the open public hearing on ordinance number 2020-08. This was the ethics ordinance update. If you recall, we had a couple revisions to it. And Joe, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about this a little.
I didn't know, again, there's no real changes from the from our meeting a month ago. Again, most of these changes are just based on the model state ordinance that that was updated. And so again, we're just trying to make make sure we stay in line with those recommendations.
Okay, so are we going to, we're okay to go ahead and approve this tonight?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, great, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-08 as presented.
Do we do we have to close out any public session or open a public session?
We've got to close the public hearing, assuming there's no comments, and then introduce this item and do a motion in a second for that.
Settle down now.
All right, well, there's no, there's nobody on from the public. I figured what the heck, let's skip right to it.
Don't have anybody on from the public, right, Carrie? Okay, so therefore, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing session first. And then now that, is there any more comments from the council on this item now that we've closed the public hearing? Okay, now, Al, would you like to make a motion now?
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-08 as presented.
A couple of seconds, pick one. We should be good, and then all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's good news. So we're gonna ethics ordinance updated. All right, our next item is to consider and discuss and act on ordinance number, oh, that was the one we just did, right? So those were together from, we closed the public hearing and then voted on it. So that takes care of both of those. All right, so new business, the next item is to discuss, consider and act on the hazard pay policy. I don't know if you've all had a chance to review the policy with the updates that Joe had put together, and is there any comments, questions on it? And if, Joe, if you want to just run through it real quick in case people didn't have a chance to look at it.
Sure, this is just a very minor update from the policy that we had adopted, I want to say it was back in May, granting this this interim hazard pay policy. Again, at the time, it did sunset at the end of the fiscal year, which was June 30. There was discussion about as people came back to work, assuming the pandemic would continue, that we would revisit this policy at a later date. So we're now bringing it back in front of you, probably should have brought it back a little earlier than this. But again, wanted to get back in front of you and really expand it. So now it covers all full-time employees, not just the ones that were working, I guess, on site during the the initial phases of the pandemic. So again, those were the only real changes that were made. Again, instead of only being applicable to police officers and public works personnel, it's now applicable to all full-time personnel.
Any questions, comments? Are we just real quick, are we, is this retroactive, or is this picking up from now? Or?
It would be retroactive back to July 1. So again, part of the policy does talk about the pay schedule, and it would be the, each of these payments would be paid out quarterly. So it would extend from July 1 through the end of the current calendar year instead of fiscal year. So up until the end of December. So there were basically two payments, one would one won't go into effect immediately, and then the next one would happen closer as we approach end of the calendar year.
Okay. And then this is funded through the CARES Act funds that.
It is, it's the coronavirus relief fund, CRF funding.
Okay. Any comments, questions from any other council folks? Okay, well, then I guess we need a motion to approve the revision to the hazard pay policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised COVID-19 hazard pay interim policy as presented.
Couple of seconds, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right, thank you. I know the staff will appreciate that. Our next mayor and town, your announcements, our next item is our announcements and reports, and our next mayor and town council meeting is on Monday, November 9, 2020. This will be a Zoom meeting as well. We have some volunteer opportunities still available on the Historic District Commission, Spark Police Auxiliary, and the crossing guard, be a good time to be the crossing guard, because you wouldn't be super busy right now. Get some, start off on experience. And you can email town@Sykesville.net for more information about volunteer with the town. Then our, start with staff updates, Joe, did you want to start with staff updates?
I really just wanted to send out a reminder or let everybody know that, again, Wednesday and Thursday this week is our design workshop for downtown. There's going to be a total of four sessions, they are during the day, one in, one in each each morning and one in each afternoon. We also will be having a public presentation Thursday evening, just to kind of go over everything that was that was learned throughout the day. So want to encourage anybody or in everybody to RSVP for that and participate in that, not just obviously on council or any of our board members, but any of the public that might be watching either on Facebook or watching tomorrow via CMC. You can RSVP, if you go to the town's website, you know, we do have a link there where you can sign up for any of those sessions. But again, anybody, anybody that's able to participate, we would really like to hear from you on any of these sessions throughout the days there on Wednesday and Thursday.
And that's town at Sykesville, or what's the town of Sykesville.org?
TownofSykesville.org.
Their website, and then what times are they during the day, by the way, so we can give everybody a?
The morning sessions are from 9:00 to 11:30, and the afternoon sessions are from 1:30 to 3:00. I'm sorry, 1:30 to 3:30.
And have we considered adding an evening session? Or I was just curious, I mean.
Well, I mean, there will be the public presentation that night, Thursday night, 6:00 to 7:30.
Comment at that time?
People will be able to watch, and it again, that'll just be Facebook Live, so they'll be up, they'll have to comment live there on Facebook. But, you know, obviously, anything that comes out during the day will just help us, you know, draft the the overall comprehensive plan. So again, they'll have other other opportunities to comment on on anything that comes out of these sessions.
Okay. All righty, anything else?
That's all I have, other than the, obviously, the water leak on Main Street, the Carroll County is still out making the repairs. I believe the water is back on. But again, they're still out there making the the necessary patchwork to the to the roadway.
Great, thanks. And then as we updated, we're all working with, you know, I sent out some emails today to work with the county, because we did have this all set up to be sort of a project together with the state, the county, and the town back when we were trying to do the streetscape. But as you all know, that got put on hold, and then the infrastructure, though, the subsurface infrastructure, really, that problem did not get put on hold. But due to COVID-19, there's been some freezing funding, we were on track to sort of get that moving, then they froze the funding. So I'm really pushing on them to get that unfrozen, because this is really turning into an emergency situation, you know, having two water main breaks in the same week. And then we haven't even hit winter yet, and that's been kind of my comment to them. So hopefully, we'll get some updates for you on that, and Joe can share that with you. We'll get it, you know, out and share it with you if we get any additional information. But we're trying to get that freeze, understands a difficult time, but this is, we knew this was coming five or six years ago when we were lobbying for the streetscape, and that's why we got the county to work with us and put money aside in the state. And so we're on track, but we're trying to get back on track. So this is just highlighting what we knew was was coming down the pike. So. All right, treasurer's report, Craig?
Good evening, everybody. I don't think 7:12, this has got to be a record for me to start talking already at one of these meetings. So that's good or bad. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at the September treasurer's report. We're currently about 52,000 behind at the moment, after three months, was pretty good shape. To let you know, especially that Carrie called up the revenue, when the real estate tax revenue, we just received another large check a week ago for 453,000. So that's going to quickly turn our deficit into probably an overage by next month, as well as build some corporate personal property tax, about 20 grand. And then I think we also got the state aid police protection grant monies for the first quarter, that's about 13 grand. So next month will look a lot, lot healthier, it's going to look pretty good. In terms of the fiscal year '21, CIP purchases were about, I guess, 55% the way through. Police has done their share already, they almost max out their piece, but we're starting to almost be through that. Another update, our audit, you know, we were hoping to have the audit done here by next week. For many, many reasons, it looks like the audit's going to be extended. Hopefully, it'll be done early December, but we've already put out the the extension to the necessary people at the Maryland Department of Legislative Services to let them know, or at least request the extension, that hopefully they'll agree to. But so we're about four weeks behind on the audit, nothing out of the ordinary, just just a lot of stuff with COVID and a lot of other unique items that have occurred over the year, as well as my rookieness is is part of it, too. So at this time, I have no other comments. If anybody has any questions, fire away, or like I said always, you can email me tomorrow or or whenever.
Okay. All right, and I think I know it's the tipping fees are going up a little bit for recycling, right? They started what, October 1, Joe?
They start January 1. We did anticipate some of that in in the current fiscal year budget. So, you know, I believe what we budgeted for should still cover us even with those increases that 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 go into effect in January.
All right, and then, well, that's another topic, or just keep that later, just asking about the recycling. I mean, it was was sort of related to the trash, but what's the deal with the recycling on Cooper, or not Cooper, Mac, on the Mack ladder? We, that was kind of a pilot thing, right? Are we continuing that, or? I didn't know how we were doing funding for that, is that going to be ongoing, or?
Is there recycling drop off, you mean?
Yeah, so remember, for the container they were picking up, or whatever we were subbing out?
The cardboard, or something, the seven to Tuesday cardboard pickup.
Is that going to keep going for?
It, I think it needs to, yes.
All right, yeah, I didn't know, like, I thought we were trying it as a pilot thing, and then.
It's it's a fairly, it's a, it's a really good rate for what they're doing, and it's 100% cleaner than it's been for the past three years. So I would definitely vote for keeping it going.
Okay, I was just wondering about that, all right.
I don't want to. I just don't know what the rate's going to do, I'll have to call Hughes to see what their what their plan is, and we may have to refocus or rebid or something.
Yeah, yes, just, yeah, that's the fiscal part of that was what I was, we can get into the part of it and see. Okay, um, let me get back to my agenda here.
Make a motion to approve the September or October treasurer's report.
September. Before we do that, any questions for, is there any other? Okay, all right, go ahead now, so Al's made a motion to approve the treasurer's report, do we have a second?
I think we need to clarify what month it is.
September, September, sorry.
All right, just just for formal, you know, documentation purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the treasurer's report is approved, thank you, and thanks, Craig, I appreciate all your work on it.
No problem, thank you.
Let's see here, our public safety report chief, you're up next.
Yes, good evening, everyone. We're going to cover the public safety report for the period September 21 through October 18. You'll see in your packet, had a total of 692 events during this timeframe, just a few highlights, 18 assist other agency, eight community policing events, 35 foot patrols, 446 patrol checks, 64 traffic enforcement initiatives, again, a total of 692 events. And then during that same period, we had a total of 16 incident reports, which you'll find in your package as well. Some very good police work involved in some of those cases that I'll highlight, unless anybody has any questions about any of the particular cases.
Any questions for chief?
Okay. Great. Some of the things I'd like to highlight, of course, is it is the political season, as you all are very much aware. We've had several of the political signs stolen, you'll see reflected in the report. And yes, you do recognize the name in the one case, the victim. Since that time, we've actually had two more that occurred very recently. Some very good police work was involved in the case that you'll you'll see in your packet. Again, with the with the use of Ring Video, which has proven to be very valuable to us here recently. Officer Kirchner was able to stop a suspect vehicle, and we were able to charge four female juveniles who had stolen the signs in those two cases, actually, they, they had actually come back a second time on the same night to steal more signs from the same victim. So we were able to charge them as well as a multitude of traffic, traffic offenses, and we're able to close that case out. So again, great work by Officer Kirchner to be alert, to be out and about, you know, patrolling, doing what he's supposed to be doing, and and hopefully at least deter some some individuals from committing these crimes. But as I mentioned, we've had, we've had two more recently. I fear they will probably continue up until the election. But as I'm sure you all saw in the recent Carroll County Times article, this is happening everywhere, so it's not not just here. Another case I wanted to point out was an excellent job by Sergeant Kilgore. Again, with the help of Ring Video, we were able to apprehend an individual who was attempting to break into vehicles late at night. It actually involved two separate victims. And again, a great job, you know, by being alert, being out and about, doing what they're supposed to be doing, and making an apprehension. So these, these are great success stories for our police department, and very proud of all the work the officers have done. One other case, real quickly, that I'll highlight was the one with Officer Betcher, as you saw in your packet. Again, you know, you sometimes wonder why we do so many patrol checks, but this is why, because the patrol check led to identifying two people that were in the park after dark. Officer Betcher asked them to leave, they left, but unfortunately for them, they came back, and Officer Betcher came back and found them, and proceeded to question them, and they decided they wanted to leave, and they're not allowed to leave while they're being detained in pursuant to an investigation. So they were arrested, there was a slight scuffle involving both of them. Fortunately, Officer Betcher was not injured, even though he was working by himself. But again, great police work by by all our officers, and I can't say enough positive about the work they're doing. They're doing just what you all expect them to be doing, being out and about, being aware of what's going on, being being vigilant, and in many cases, making making arrests in cases that are oftentimes very difficult, difficult to close. So very proud of them all.
Yep, it's a great job, chief, thanks for that, and sender, thank you and appreciation as well. Can't say thanks enough, I know it's a tough time, especially with the election stuff right now, things are crazy. Yeah, it's good to, yes, I knock on wood, we're somewhat blessed that it's not crazier, so.
Very true.
Yeah, we appreciate, appreciate everything you guys are doing, and keep up the good work.
You sure will.
Has any any other questions or comments for the chief?
Great job, chief.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to point out that this is another example of Sergeant Kilgore, you know, I've been a longtime resident now, and he's always been at helping out and doing things for the community, you know, we're just so lucky to have him.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, and I wanted to just give you a special thanks to for him, I know they were out with the church and going through town with the tractor treat. I think people enjoyed that, you know, it was kind of cool. So I saw the police out helping them and helping organize that, and they've been a good partner to the town, so thank you.
Absolutely, we were actually handing out some of our own gift bags along with the Friendship Baptist Church. So it was a good way for us to get back to the community and have a positive community event, you know, particularly during these these trying times. So that event went pretty well, from what I understand.
Yeah, great, now, it was nice to see them, and I think having them out and then seeing the police out, too, is it's always good.
And kudos to our auxiliary, again, you know, we're down to five, five members in that unit, as you mentioned earlier, we're always recruiting, but we're down to five members now, and the bulk of the hours are quite, quite honestly, being performed by two or three. So they're putting in long, long days, long hours on all of our events, and I've said it a million times, we couldn't do what we do without without them. And we're very fortunate to have five very, very dedicated, committed individuals, and we've got a couple, couple of prospective applicants that we're working on now. Next year, if we return to all our events, we're certainly going to need to beef that unit, unit up more, and and we are working on that. So Lieutenant Cox and all the members of that unit do a phenomenal job, and we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, yep, so thank you on behalf of the myself and the entire council, too, to the auxiliary, because you're right, we can't do it without them. And if you're watching this on on Zoom or on the TV later, and you have an interest in the law enforcement track, and you want to get hooked up with a really great auxiliary and a great organization, this is one to really get hooked up with, I would say. I mean, they really do a class act, and I think if if, you know, it's a good learning experience for young folks that want to, that are considering possible law enforcement, and I think it gives them a really good leg up, too. So thanks, chief, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, so if there's no other questions, is that it? Are we good, anything else, chief, or?
No, it's all I have.
All right, so let's see, any, let's start with the council committee reports. So we'll start with Parks and Rec, which, before we get started, I'm excited to tell you, the fence is down today at the skate park, so hallelujah! We're, and me and Stacy got in a little trouble, we're a little behind schedule, we promised everybody on the first. So I, somebody actually, a young guy gave me a hard time, said, you're in big trouble, mayor, and I told him, I said, well, it's coming. So I told him this week, so anyway, go ahead, Stacy.
Well, so so formally, the skate park is not yet open.
Well, I mean, it's, there were kids on it today, and the fence is down, so is it formally open, Joe?
That was a question, yeah, that wasn't.
Yeah, there, there are still a few, few minor items that that need to be taken care of down there before we officially open it up. But certainly, by the weekend, or by Friday, it'll be officially open.
Very good.
That's official. Officially, official.
Officially, official, but likely won't be arrested if you're up there, I guess.
Officially, officially, only 22 weeks behind schedule, so that's good. All right, um, so Parks and Rec. I will apologize ahead of time, this is going to be a little bit lengthy, I've got a lot to say. So the Keep Maryland Beautiful designation that that we have received as as part of our completion of our spring cleanup, which became a summer cleanup, cleanup turned into a fall cleanup. We are now basically set up or qualified for the reception of a grant through Keep Maryland Beautiful. So we're going to apply for that in the hopes that it's a non-matching grant, and we're looking to hopefully get our recycling receptacles for Cooper Park and South Branch Park through that grant. Speaking of our town cleanup, we had a very good turnout. We had 35 volunteers that divided into three groups and cleaned up three different areas within our, within our town limits. Well, two were within our town limits, one was actually up along River Road. And we collected, once I consolidated the bags and emptied half-full bags so that they could be reused, we picked up about 14 bags of litter, and from there, I, we separated trash from recycling and were able to get eight bags recycled, eight bags worth of litter into proper recycling canisters. So I was pretty stoked about that, we really spent a lot of our time and focus on the embankment on the side of Oklahoma Avenue, where it lends itself down to the railroad tracks, and that was really, really poorly, like, very badly littered, lots of dumping tires. I found a Hewlett Packard 1992, circa 1992 Hewlett Packard monitor that was that was picked up and properly disposed of. Anyway, I'm really thrilled about about the the volunteerism that day and about what we accomplished. So kudos to all our volunteers and to our Spark Committee, our Sykesville Parks and Rec Committee, who organized that a very successful event. We have recently worked with staff, and when I say we have worked with staff, we asked staff to complete, and Joe saw to it that it was a town park maintenance improvement slash improvement list that we can build upon with respect to our parks here in town. Um, we also, yeah, so that's, I just want to announce, our next meeting is scheduled for the third Thursday in November, November 19th is a Thursday, and that is when our next meeting is scheduled for, the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving. So that is a un-trad, non-traditional date for our meeting in the month of November, November 19th. And it will be live on Facebook. And also, I wanted to, on behalf of the Downtown Sykesville Connection, invite all of my fellow town council members to participate this year in the Happy-Thon. The Downtown Sykesville Connection's been, basically, single-handedly, Julie Dela Maria has been working diligently since, I believe, 2015 was the first Happy-Thon, and at that point, there were 14 families in need that were identified, and that benefited from having some Christmas gifts to open. And since then, the the need has increased, and last year. And since then, the, the need has increased. And last year, let me look here, last year, there were forty-four families that benefited from, from everyone else's generosity and, and holiday spirit. And this year, it appears that I guess a lot has to do with COVID and and, and the resulting economic strife that a lot of families are going through. The needs increased by about thirty percent this year. And, and you can imagine that as the need has increased, the fundraising opportunities have really been reduced this year. But Downtown Sykesville Connection has begun raising money and fundraising, I should say, for this particular event. And so this is just an opportunity that I'm making to announce to my fellow town council members and anyone who happens to be listening to this live or plays it back in the future. Let me just tell you how you can donate to this wonderful cause. It looks like you can simply write a check to the Downtown Sykesville Connection and mail that to seven three zero seven Spout Hill Road. Or there is a donate button on the Downtown Sykesville Connections website. And you would simply click on that and, and fill that in. And the information as far as a tax ID number can be found on the, on the flyer that's, that's also available on the website. So that is the end, I think. Let me check here. Oh, and I'd like to throw out something. This is not Spark related. But I know that council all gets an opportunity to make announcements at the end of the meeting. And sometimes I think we forget to do that, or I forget to take that opportunity. So I just wanted to do that now, if that's okay, Mayor?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so the, we traditionally do a or encourage our Main Street business owners to decorate their storefronts for the Christmas holiday. And this year, and normally this, the council goes around and visits the residents and drives Main Street and selects a winner or two amongst those storefronts. And of course residential winners as well. And proposing this year that perhaps we could, as a town, kind of partner with the DSC. Julie Dela Maria, their executive director, has offered to help organize and promote this contest amongst the business owners with the, with respect to lighting up their storefronts and decorating. And then we would actually make it a public voting contest. Wouldn't be on the backs of the council to select amongst all the wonderful work, but instead make it a, get the public and get our citizens involved, residents involved. And let them vote. So that's something that, that Judy's, Julie's proposed she would make possible on, on the DSC's website, Facebook page, et cetera. Town can also have that up on their website, our website, and, and make that possible. And then my proposal would be that perhaps we could, as an award for that winner, maybe do something for a free month of recycling pickup or, or trash pickup or something like that to those individuals, waive their fee for that. If that, then that's just something I'm throwing out there. I don't know how the council feels about that, but I throw that out there tonight.
I like the trash idea. Love the idea of her taking care of everything though.
Yeah, there's that too, right?
That way we can get off the hook. People are always like, how did you decide? And we could say, the people decided to be awesome. Did she do the residential too?
Uh-oh. I don't know about that.
They'll say, put in your thing, we'll just come out and drive and pick you off the list. Here's your sign, you know, you were picked by.
I think it would give us, give everybody an opportunity to really, you know, show their best efforts, although they always do, but this would really raise the stakes a bit and, and getting the public involved, I think will bring the holiday spirit when, when we need it the most.
I think maybe we should consider like a donation, like instead of giving them free trash, maybe we have like, uh, I don't know, that's an interesting concept. I was thinking we could give them something where they could go to shop at some of the other stores, but that wouldn't make sense if they're the shop owner.
Plus they're competing with each other for the prize.
We'll talk about the prize. I don't know, any other comment? This, I, I'm glad she's willing to take that over the business aspect because I thought, you know, it was tough to.
Hard last year figuring out which business was good. That'd be good if the, I, I like the idea too of the public voting on it, then it'll bring it down there, maybe, you know? To Stacy, that's a great idea.
Good deal. I like it.
I agree. I, I love the idea, Stacy.
Cool. Thanks. I can't take total credit for this. This is, this is a, a, a result of a think tank. So of which I participated, but it was not my idea.
Fantastic idea.
Good. All right. Thanks, guys.
That's important for that. I guess we can figure out some, some way to reward the winner.
Yeah.
Was that a Saturday night think tank?
Uh, yes, it was. With, with champagne.
Yeah, there you go. All right, great. That's a pandemic think tank. All right, uh, let's see. How about anything Jeremiah from Raincliff?
Yeah, I have a few updates. So Raincliff met on October fifth. This was their annual budget meeting. The HOA budget passed. I provided some updates in reference to the town. They had some questions in reference to South Branch Park. So very happy to hear that we're going to be opening that up later this week. On October eighth, there, so October eighth and ninth was the virtual fall conference for the Maryland Municipal League. And I was able to attend on October eighth. I could not due to a, a work conflict in my other job on the ninth. But did get the opportunity to listen to Governor Hogan as well as Senator Carden and a few others in reference to how we're managing through the pandemic for the state and at the federal level. And then also got to stay, you know, listen to a couple of classes, one on social media and one in reference to a disaster assistance grant. Which I can provide more information to you, Joe, later. But the one thing that I went for, the primary reason I was there is just to go through the legislative priorities this year. And I've mentioned them before, but I just want to bring it to the public's attention again and make sure that the council is aware. So there's one legislative priority for two thousand twenty-one. And that has to do with a highway user revenues. I just want to read it out loud so that you all know what it is. After years of underfunding, the MML legislative priority for two thousand twenty-one is the full and permanent restoration of the municipal highway rev, user revenues and specifically to eliminate the sunset of the current level of municipal highway user revenues that is due to occur on FY two thousand twenty-four. And then two is to return to the full pre-recession funding of municipal highway user revenues beginning with FY two thousand twenty-five state budget. Just an FYI, last year, they got very close to getting a bill signed. This year, we're not exactly sure if a bill will get signed or not. Legislative session could be reduced. There's focus on police reform and passing of the budget. That's where the two major priorities are. But MML is going to put forth a bill and try to get support. There's also two strategic initiatives. One is in reference to retaining local authority over technology and infrastructure installation. And the second is in reference to mitigating the effects of climate change. So what it means having a, a strategic initiative is that there are many bills that pass through the legislative committee that MML takes a look at what will happen with any bill that impacts local infrastructure and/or climate change. Is that we'll take a special look at those bills to ensure that the municipalities are well represented when we actually get to moving the bills moving forward. So just an FYI in reference to that process. And then finally, on October fourteenth, I sat in on my first Board of Education meeting. And I think you've all seen the news. Since then, the major decision was reopening of schools. So there's a decision on ten nineteen to reopen in a hybrid model, elementary and middle school. And of course, that impacts Sykesville Middle, which is in our town. And then there was a decision for November twelfth, which you know, has received, you know, these, these are tough decisions. I'll just say that. They're tough decisions to make by the, by the Board of Education. And there's been, you know, opposition from all sides in reference to these decisions. That's me saying it lightly. And on November twelfth is when high school will reopen in a hybrid format. Since then, there's also some articles out there in reference to high school sports coming back online on twelve seven, which has also been a concern for the community. So it's just an FYI that a lot going on in reference to the Board of Education. And I'm, I'm sitting in and listening and learning. That's really where I am right now. In reference to the overall discussions, I haven't even introduced myself to the folks. I think that they're extremely busy. I'm letting some of these things kind of work them, work their ways through. And then beginning FY twenty-one calendar years, when I anticipate actually reaching out and introducing myself and, and trying to develop that relationship. But I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that, especially you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I got.
Yep. Thanks, Jeremiah. I appreciate it. And it is helpful to have that information because it does affect a lot of our residents. And so thank you. And I appreciate you being willing to do that. And then, and then don't forget, it's important when you vote, vote for your school board members, you know. I, I think often people don't get enough information about these candidates. And it's important because they're like fifty percent of the budget. You know, is for the school board. So it's such an important decision that people need to get involved in. So.
Thank you too, Jeremiah, for bringing that back. I think we all failed to thank you. It's an extra effort to, to collect all that information for us and, and attend those meetings. So thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I'm happy to do it. I'm learning, I'm learning a lot as I go through the process, working at, obviously, the local level like we all do, and then at the county and the state level. And of course, my day job is at the federal level. And so it's just really interesting to see how all this works and doesn't work, because all of that happens.
Right. No, it's, yeah, you're right. And I appreciate your, your work on the legislative committee too, because there are going to be some challenges. You know, I'm hopeful that we're going to get some federal infrastructure dollars that will trickle down to the states and help with their highway user argument, you know, because we really, infrastructure is so important. And with this pandemic, a lot of it's getting put on the back burner right now, because I can tell you that's what's going on with eight fifty-one. It's just tough to get money. So hopefully that's going to get better. But, um, and if you find out any of the, if you share that with Joe with the, the two hundred and fifty million dollars, I think that I read the article about that. So I'm trying to get more information about when that's going to be coming out for small businesses. The governors doing a whole nother round of state grants and stuff for people, for our small businesses. So now we'll follow up on that. I wanted to talk to the senator, didn't even have the information yet on how to get it. So I'm following up on that too. But, but yeah.
If I hear anything, Mayor, I'll let you know.
Yeah, if you get any more information on that, definitely send it over to us because we're all interested in that. So, um, all right. And then I guess, Anna, you're up, HDC.
We have not had a meeting since our last mayor and town council. We will have a meeting tomorrow night, seven o'clock, Zoom. There's four applications. And I will bring that back to you at our next town council meeting.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. All right. And then Al, the business.
We haven't had a meeting since our, our last meeting. We are scheduled to meet this Friday, the thirtieth. November sixth is the first Friday and it's Willy Wonka night down there. They got a golden ticket and you know, some candy. If you didn't get any candy for Halloween, if you got tricked or whatever, they'll have some candy to pass out for you. It sounds like a fun event. Looking forward to that. That's all I got.
All right. Thanks, Al. And I guess as everybody knows, we've got the barriers out. So I wanted to thank Joe for all your work and the staff for on that. Getting them put in and managing all that and Chief and everybody, Derek, I know everybody worked on it. And so thank you. It was a big help. All right. And then, uh, next up on my screen then would be Mark.
Well, there was no planning commission meeting, but as you heard Joe talking about the comprehensive plan, which was on Wednesday, October fourteenth, and the, the listening session, the listening session broke up into what they call, you know, working groups or where we split up and talked. And of course, we are looking forward to the Wednesday and Thursday of this week. I'm hoping to attend most of that myself. My wife is, will be recovering from minor elbow surgery by this time tomorrow, but I think I can still make them. And we're looking forward to the December Comprehensive Plan Virtual Town Open House. And lastly, like Jeremiah said, I attended also the session and it was quite good. I know that Joe was in attendance. So I think we all got something out of that, those of us who were able to attend. That's all I've got.
Yep, thank you. Yeah. And I got to, I was, I got to attend a little bit of that. It was, it was challenging to get to the, all the stuff for, because yeah, we're all working. So it's tough, but I was able to get someone on the law enforcement stuff. Very interesting stuff, because that is going to be on the front burner of the reform. And there's a lot of interesting things coming out of that. So we're all going to have to be aware of, you know, the changes and being sensitive to it and what, what's reasonable, what's not. And so, and I know the chief is paying attention. I know that's probably countywide, right? So, um, so thanks for bringing that up, Mark and Jeremiah both, because it is important. And, and it was, it's been tough. I that you're, the virtual conference has been very difficult for me, but, but at least they're trying, you know, it's better than not having it. So. And we were able to talk to some of the cabinet secretaries this year at the conferences and stuff. So that was helpful to get that contact. But glad you followed up on it. And then Leo, DSC.
Yeah, thanks. To tie into what Stacy was saying earlier about the Happy Thon, we did get a three thousand dollar grant from Walmart towards that. But there is a bigger need this year. So in addition to grant money that's been received so far, there's a goal of another seven thousand dollars that's needed to deal with all the families that have been added to the list this year, because we target elementary school children. And that's the names we get, but in it. So we just have like one child in elementary school, but then that child has siblings too. So even though it, it might be forty-four or fifty-four families, it's actually several children in the family. So there is a great need. So we've got another target of another seven thousand dollars for that. The first.
Where are the families, Leo? Like, I meant to ask this one Stacy and I forgot. Are these all in Sykesville or are they the?
Yes.
Yes.
Wow. Okay. All right. I mean, in the town itself?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
Okay, wow. That is, yeah. Okay. So there's a huge need. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. The first run of the, first edition of the poker run was very successful. And I understand both you and Al were involved in that and had a great time. Good, good. Good. And we're hoping to make it an annual event, because it didn't require volunteers and was low constraint on staff. So it was successful all around. Farmer's Market ended this past weekend. Unfortunately, cold rain, but the farmer's market, the way it was set up this year was successful on its limited basis. But the vendors that we had were happy with the way it worked out. And finally, the big news for the DSC is we finally got our IRS approval to be a five oh one C three. We are now officially a five oh one C three. It took a year or more. COVID didn't help, but it is done. And we're in the process of taking care of everything that needs to be done with that to get the, get away from the Carroll Community Foundation and just have our own five oh one C three.
Congratulations.
Yeah, but we have IRS approval finally.
That was a great job, man. I know you put a lot of effort into that. So thank you.
It wasn't so much me. It was Julie and the attorney who took care of all that. I was, once getting it started, I passed it all off to them. It was Julie.
I knew they had an attorney in there. So I thought that was you doing.
No, no, that's well out of my wheelhouse.
But it will, thanks. Well, then thanks to Julie and everybody who did that. That was a lot of work to get that thing approved. So.
A lot of paperwork.
Yes. So thank you and thank Julie. That was it. Yeah. And the poker room was awesome, man. We had a good time. I think it was a great way to get our name out around the different locations and stuff. And everybody was well received everywhere we went. Everybody was, that was a good event. And I think it's a great way to promote the town around and our surrounding communities. So I wanted to thank Julie and, uh, oh, forgive me. Troy, is it? Troy, thank you. Troy. Tip of my tongue, but.
That's all right, man. It was good.
And he reached out to the, the, one of the guys. It was a biker and got a lot of advice on how to do it. And, and he did a good job, man. So it was really cool. And the weather was wonderful. And yes, it was good event.
Oh, and I did forget to promote one more town business. Market Tavern should be reopening on their limited basis inside on November fourth. So looking forward to that.
Awesome.
It is great. I know people missing that. All right. Okay. And then, um, so, and I've been playing run around tag with Jack at the gatehouse. He was traveling and we've just been having a hard time getting together, but I, I do plan to try to catch up with him probably within this, before the next meeting for sure. we've just been having a hard time getting together, but I, I do plan to try to catch up with him probably within this, before the next meeting for sure. We've just haven't been able to connect lately. So. And then I wanted to see, do we, were we able to take care of the stuff at the schoolhouse that, um, there was a couple of issues that had come up?
So yeah, we, we were able to get, I guess, an air filter for them down there. There were some concerns, you know, about you know, having all the people in the building and hopefully the, the air filter would help out. I know the floor, there's an area of the floor that we're trying to find matching flooring so that that repair can be made. And then there was a complaint about an odor issue coming from the, from the new pump station down there. And honestly, we've had several people go down and, go down and check and have not been able to, to, to find a source of any kind of smell or smell anything that was, that was unpleasant down there. But we're still looking into that and we'll certainly help pad out if, if we find anything.
Okay. Yeah. So I'll follow up with her again too. I was trying to get down and there's a, still doing the homework club down there. So she, they've been able to have a couple of volunteers and helping out with tutoring and the homework club. So that's always good to keep that going. And, um,
Joe, just throwing this out here, the loading dock in Baltimore is a, it's a nonprofit and they may have, have some luck with matching flooring.
Okay. We'll take a look.
Yeah, thanks. All right. And then, um, I think that's it. Did I cover everybody? I didn't miss anybody, did I? Okay. All right. Good. I think I got everybody. So that's that. I think that's everything, right? Anything else, Joe? Or are we good? I think that was it.
I think we covered it all.
Okay. All right. So then we'll have a motion to adjourn. All right.
But from, from the bunker in the basement and I'll second that.
What are you talking about? I'm in the lake.
Is that upstate there in New York?
That's, that's Crater Lake in Oregon. About four or five years ago when I was there.
Yeah, that was awesome. All right, cool. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it. And have a good evening. We, oh, we are adjourned. All those in favor, let's take the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you. So the meeting is adjourned officially.